Call the Finance Administration Committee to order. It is August 30th, 6:00 PM. Councilmember Holloway, Councilmember Christensen, and Councilmember Mayhew committee members are present. We have city administrator, finance administrator, city attorney, various staff support, and also councilmembers Watten and Benson in attendance. All right, let's bring up the agenda if we could. All right, tonight's agenda is on the screen. Are there any comments or questions about the agenda? If there are none, if there is no objection, we'll take the agenda as approved. Hearing no objection, the agenda is approved. To see if there are any, there are no members of the public in attendance in the council chambers. We'll see if any are attending virtually. See no members of the public attending virtually, so there are no members of the comment for the public comment section. We'll move on to agenda bills. Tonight's business is Agenda Bill 22-074, Continuing Consideration of Proposed Financial Management Policy Amendments. I think we're picking up tonight at 6.0, where we left off last night. And so, let's see, last night was 5.0 was, what do we call it, operating budget and procurement, is that right? Purchasing and procurement, what do we call that?
Expenditures and procurement.
Yes, that. Like, that's what I said, isn't it?
Yes, absolutely.
I'm sure it is.
And operating budget.
Yes.
I heard it.
And tonight, we're taking, starting with 6.0 capital budget and Finance Director, do you want to take a soon overview?
Sure. So, the capital budget, we carve out in proposed policy because it is a major deal, major investments of city resources into capital assets. You'll find that the capital budget proposed policy update, updates objectives, priority statements, and removes procedures from any existing policies. It has been proposed a new CIP Criteria and Ranking Table that is included in the proposed policy, as well as identifies source and use identification for capital improvement projects. We've also, I think we've lightly touched on CIP updates that would shift to a biennial review versus an annual review, and that is primarily to offer up a better public engagement effort in that off-year, where some ideas would be that we would be asking the community or accepting feedback on those projects, but also to give staff time in order to, you know, improve upon those project details, but nonetheless, the shift to a biennial review of a CIP plan. That is just a very high-level overview of this section.
Okay, thank you very much. So, by way of background, I think just over the recent years, I think we, excuse me, haven't been, I wouldn't say that we were on an annual review basis, we were on a, what's the right word, periodic review basis, but as we've been sort of trying to push that out to a six-year CIP that we're sort of regularly updating, I certainly think that, you know, making that a biennial process, sort of our whole budgeting process, sort of a biennial budgeting process, certainly makes sense. You mentioned the idea of public engagement, is that actually written anywhere in these sections, or was that was just sort of some thoughts that you were mentioning?
There is a statement with regards to public engagement, and... That is, in the Planning Process 6.4. The last sentence states that the CIP development shall include public engagement efforts to ensure the community has ample time to comment on and contribute to the CIP. My mouse is not cooperating with me, bear with me, please. In Section 6.1, the last paragraph, the second paragraph, "The City Council will review the CIP biannually and coordinate development of the multi-year capital budget prior to the development..."
Sorry, I didn't see where you were. Could you mention where you are again?
I'm sorry. 6.1, Capital Improvement Plan, second paragraph. Starting with the second sentence, "The off-year capital budget cycle will allow for public engagement efforts to discuss potential projects and programs with the community and include major changes that occur or are discovered." So, two places to reference public engagement efforts.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Holloway.
So, I want to get a discussed... And include major changes that occur and/or, what does that mean, that last part of that?
And include major changes. Well, oftentimes, the, you know, the capital projects are estimates at the time that the council sets the plan. So, sometimes, there are major changes that happen. There are unknowns, and those are brought before the council. So, major changes are, that occur, they happen, or we discover them. So, it's a play on words, and that's the intent, is that sometimes there are unknowns, we don't know what we don't know, so nonetheless, that we would, we would address that in the CIP if those major changes occurred.
Okay, so, I am not in favor of a biennial CIP plan.
Uh-huh.
There should be, it may be a lesser review, but at midterm, there should be a review of the CIP plan, also in consideration that the STIP, the Transportation Plan, is an annual thing. So, there are components of the CIP plan that require annual action. I'm not comfortable neglecting my responsibilities for a year to review that as part of the midterm review of the budget and where we are. I further agree with you, reality happens, and any plan we make, you name your timeframe X months ago, will need tweaking as we go through. Now, I think that we need some wordage in there. Yeah, it's not a full review, it is an adjustment review, or however you want to term it, but there needs to be an adjustment review as part of the midterm review on the budget.
So, where in the Section 6.0, can we just focus in on where we say it's a biennial thing as opposed to an annual thing, so we could kind of zero in on Councilmember Holloway's comments?
Well, it's mentioned in 6.1, and so, the, essentially, the two paragraphs, there are references to the biennial review or development of the capital plan. So, the first reference to biennial is in the first paragraph on page 19 of 29 of your work-in-progress policy document. "Master plan changes will be incorporated into the CIP during the next biennial capital budget cycle." That is, the, starts on page 19, goes to the top of page 20, so...
So, Councilmember Holloway, to that regard, would you look for that sentence to say something more like, incorporate into annual reviews, or something like that? Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, we, as part of the, yes, as part of the interim review we do annually, or biannually on the off-years, we ought to review the capital improvement plan.
Sure. So, master, would it work to say, "Master plan changes will be incorporated into each year's CIP review," or into a review of the CIP each year?
Well, and I think, I think you, you had an attempt on the last part of that sentence where you said, "And include major changes to occur as discovered." I would flesh that out as a full sentence and conduct interim reviews of capital plan in conjunction with the budget review on the off-years to incorporate any changes, major priority changes, whatnot. We could have election, have a whole new council in there, and an interim review, who also decide to go left.
Not disagreeing with you. Councilmember Christensen, any?
I'm in agreement.
Yeah, yeah, me too. So, could, so is there any?
I trust you to take the intent and wordsmith it better than I say it.
What I'm thinking is, is that that second paragraph is, is that we can shore that up with, with a statement about a mid-budget review of capital, also in conjunction with master plans. Drew, did you have any kind of thoughts that...
So, sorry, hold on, can we, we're mixing two concepts, I think we need to keep separate.
I agree.
All right. There's a CIP, that's not an appropriation, it's not a budget, it's not part of a biennial budget, it's a thing that stands on its own. So, re-looking at the CIP annually, fine, great, if we want to do that, that is an independent concept, then the, when you have a biennial appropriation, then you're required to have a mid-biennium review, that's to do with the biennial budget, which is a different thing than the CIP. Yes, it has typically two years, typically that match the first two years of the CIP, but it's still a different document, it's a budget document, you can change the CIP without changing the budget, and I guess vice versa, right?
The CIP is a planning, yeah, guide tool, and, yes, the first two years, and that is in the proposed policy, there's reference that the first two years of the approved CIP plan would be incorporated in the biennial budget, so that is...
Well, it's incorporated in the biennial budget proposal, it says, which then may or may not get passed in that form, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, I think what you're asking...
They play together, though.
Excuse me?
They play together.
Hopefully.
I mean, if we change the CIP so that the, we take, if we change projects and we move them out to the next biennial, we should revise the capital portion of the budget to reflect that.
Right, but you may, for example, you may do a CIP and, update in June, and then in December, when you redo your budget, you may do something that isn't the same as what you said in the CIP, now you ought to then double back to the CIP and get that in conformance, but they're two separate processes, right?
Separate but related, and the CIP should feed the budget.
Yes.
Matter of fact, we should probably do the CIP review before we do, well, it may roll back, it may do feedback if we do a CIP plan and come to the budget and go, mm, can't do that, money-wise, so there may be a feedback loop, but they should go hand-in-hand as part of that review.
Right, so I, so I think that's, we just want to build this to say what you just said, right?
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Well, what I'm, what I'm hearing is, is that you, you want a statement to, to review the CIP on an annual basis, along with, and perhaps in conjunction with the operating budget amendments, if that's, if that's the case, because they do inform...
Well, in conjunction, so that's the question, is do we want to actually burden that much onto a review process that typically happens November, December, right? Do you want to force a full review of the CIP at the same time, or do you just want to say, "Look, we need to look at the CIP annually," and that's one thing, or do you want to link them in time, the way you're, like, how, so for example, like, take what we did this year, which I think is a great process, we did the CIP the earlier part of the year before we get into the budget, so do you want to permit that sort of more evening of the workload, or do you want them to happen the same time?
They don't need to happen concurrently, and I think the CIP should feed into the budget, so it should occur before.
Yeah, so it, sort of if they happen, let's say they happen six months apart, they sort of feed back into, they sort of goes back and forth, right?
Right, and if something happens in that six months, we can make adjustments, right?
Yeah. So, I think we're looking for that.
Technically, we can make adjustments at any time.
Yes, that's true. Mr. Butte.
Hi, so, we're discussing, I guess, the mid-biennium kind of budget review a little bit, and maybe incorporating the CIP as a part of that. I also want to make sure that we consider, so the Parks and Public Works Committee in the past has required or desired a quarterly update regarding how we're spending our dollars on those capital project expenditures, and so that is something that you may want to consider as a part of this discussion is, and in some cases, there may be a duplication of effort involved in providing a quarterly update in addition to potentially opening back up the CIP, if that's what the council member is asking for. I guess we're looking maybe for what kind of degree of effort do you want involved in this? Are we amending the CIP, coming back, actually presenting a new document, right, with any sort of changes to that CIP, the 84-page document we just presented, for example, or should we come back with an 11-by-17 size sheet that says, "Here are the projects, here's how much we've spent to date against the project budget overall, what do you guys think? Do we need to make adjustments here or here?" We can bring back kind of a, you know, that one-page financial schedule that we had as part of the CIP, so I guess we're looking in terms of what is the level of effort that council wants us to...
So, just building on that, do you want, do you want to see the full council, as policy, we're just going to full council review it no matter what, or do you want to have, for example, the, if the Parks and Public Works Committee review it, and then comes to the council if Parks and Public Works Committee is recommending changes?
Right, so, let me answer a couple of different questions here. One, I'm not going to codify in here the quarterly review of CIP, that's a Parks and Public Works thing outside of the financial policy. I'm willing to forego a quarterly review to do a CIP review if the workload, if workload management says that's the proper thing to do. I got no problem skipping a quarter every now and then, okay? I would do a public works, Parks and Public Works review, and then come back to council with either a recommendation for change, or a statement of, "We reviewed it, recommend no change at this time, based on we're, we're heading to plan, we're close enough," okay? It, there, we're going to have to get comfortable with some wiggle room there, because it will never be a perfect gear sink.
So then...
Makes sense?
So, then are you saying, for purpose of the policy, we would say, "Let's have an annual review of the CIP," but we don't need to tie it to the mid-biennium budget review, we just want to have an annual CIP review?
Other than timing, I would do it prior to the budget.
So, you can do a funny thing, if you're six months apart, is that prior to, or is it just, is it, you know what I mean?
Is it six months behind?
Right, do you actually want to link, exactly. Did you just want to say, "Look, do it annually," and just sort of leave it at that, or do you want to get more descriptive?
I'm willing to work the specifics later. I just, it's just, annually, you should have a review and decide if there's any significant changes that need to be brought forward.
How's that sound?
I, I'm agreeable to that, I do think that it's better to give the flexibility and just have it's the annual, at least at this level, and then I do think it'd be nice to have an 11-by-7, like, update, this is where we are, as we're looking through it for the whole council.
She just took 10 inches out of that thing away from me. Did you see that happen? He was proposing 11-by-17.
Oh, sorry. But I, I wouldn't want to wade to have a look into the details, unless it's necessary, and I feel like if, if we're having a chance to look at the documents, if Parks and Public Works has looked at it, I think we all feel pretty comfortable. If we need to come back and ask for information, I think that's something that we can do, but I, I don't know that I would memorialize that, I feel like it could lead future councils into the weeds in a way that would not be productive for anyone.
No.
All right, so, Mr. Butte, did you get, did you hear answers to the questions you were hoping we'd answer there? Not, "Did you agree with them," just, "Did you hear answers?"
Finance Director, and HR Director, see what she may have recorded?
You know, when I'm looking at the proposed policy and, and this change, perhaps that second paragraph would be that the City Council would review the CIP annually and determine whether or not...
I think we just say, "Review it annually," and just leave it at that? It's implied.
I think leaving it at that, because we're almost, it sounded like we're almost kind of going down a six-month review, and I don't think that that's what we're intending, because the council adopted the CIP before the operating budget, which is a, that is a wonderful strategy, and I'm, I'm very glad that capital needs to come first. If we were to then, now, if we, if we look forward in 2023, where we're, where we're looking at the CIP again in June, at some point in time, you know, the, that then could kind of seem like we're, we're doing a six-month review, because the council's going to be allocating in the operating budget the first two years of capital, likely.
The operating budget, you mean in the...
Allocation of the budget, there are capital, that's where the...
Yeah, but we're, we're budgeting the capital and the operating and utilities, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, so again, you're revisiting year one and two, in a sense, of the, of the, of the plan, the CIP, in the operating budget. So then again, in 2023...
Hold on, I just want to make sure, because this has been a point of confusion, we don't allocate two annual years, we allocate one biennium. I'm sorry, let me try that again. We don't appropriate two annual years, we appropriate one biennium.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
You agree with that, right?
Well, I agree with that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everyone understood that, yeah.
So, right, the council adopts and appropriates a biennial budget.
So, how, how that gets split between the years is within administrations...
Absolutely, right. So, if we're looking then at the, in 2023, if we, if we take a crystal ball, and we look at 2023, and the council's going to then review the CIP annually, it may feel like we are, after the council has adopted their budget by December of 2022, we get into June, or even September, is that we're, you know, we're doing that review of the CIP, so that, that feels like it's less than a year where the council's reviewing that, prior to the mid-period adjustment.
So, I'm confused now, because this proposes an annual review.
A biennial review.
It says annual.
In the second paragraph, "The City Council will review the CIP biannually."
It talks about off-year capital budget cycle in the second paragraph.
Yes, so the off-year capital budget cycle, which would be 2023 if we were to adopt this, in 2023, that, that would be considered the off-year, will allow for that public engagement effort to go and gather feedback from the community, gather...
So, I can tell you right now, there's no council that in 2024, in November, October, November of 2024, is going to feel like some review done possibly by a different council 18 months ago, that there's no way they're going to say, "We're just not even going to relook at that, that's not going to happen."
Well, the 20, the, the, in 2024, the beginning of 2024, would start the, the new CIP review, so, so if the council's reviewing the CIP in 2023, and then updating the, the CIP for '25 through '30...
Let me see, let me see if I can split the hair. Council review the CIP annually, will approve a CIP as part of the biennial budget preparation at minimum, okay?
Does that work?
But we should review it on the off-years. Matter of, I'll even strengthen that, there will be a review on the off-years. Okay?
Is that okay?
That's fine, we'll do some wordsmithing to see if that meets the intent.
To try and make that, what he, what Councilmember Holloway just said, was that, you can try and word that up for us?
And there may be no effect of that review if minimum is just an educational refresh to getting us set up for the next year, when we will do the, when we will do the biennial budget, particularly if you have election, you know, this is rotating chairs around here. There will be new people coming in and out, it's best to keep the council refreshed on the important subjects, this is one of those important subjects. Drew wants to say something.
Mr. Butte, go ahead.
I guess, maybe from the staff's perspective, I want to make sure that there's some certainty and certitude that comes with the plan that council adopts, and so, almost sounds like that the plan is continuously open.
Yes.
And if it is continuously open, right, if we're having this review process, you know, maybe every year or so, probably a little bit less than that, then really, staff has a hard time understanding, maybe, is council going to change this, is council not going to change that, why do we want to work on that, if council might change it, for example, and so, certitude, I think, is important for staff overall to actually get these projects moving. In addition to that, if I can remember my second point, which is always the trouble, isn't it?
We'll give you a second, go ahead, think, think.
But the approved CIP is the approved CIP and his direction to staff to execute. Until the, until the approved CIP is changed, you have certain...
So, the biennial budget is the execution.
Yeah, the CIP is not an approval to execute.
They, they...
So, we would have proved it in December, right, supposedly the biennial budget, we would have to come back, probably start August of 2023 to have that annual review of the CIP, which may take a month, right, maybe even less, if, if there's little changes, for example, but, you know, is that eight months sufficient to provide staff enough certainty, right, that we should continue with some of these projects moving forward? I know council mentioned potentially changeover, turnover on council seats, also, what I would want to suggest, that staff needs lead time as well, so part of the reason why you're looking at this off-year budget cycle here, is because we need to kind of generate ideas, we need to gather ideas from council, from the community as well, we can't see necessarily everything that's going on out there, neither can the Parks and Public Works staff, even though they may have the better expertise, and, you know, the CIP that we developed this year, we started in March, adopted in August, actually, it started way before that, right, for the most part, and a lot of those items were just continued from the past, but when we get more, better at executing these projects, we're going to have to generate new ideas potentially for what to do with that, and that will come with, we have to gather cost information, we have to figure out what is the scope of the project, what is the timeline overall. There's a lot of work that goes into prepping for that CIP, and that's why you see some of this off-year budget cycle stuff listed here, it's because staff needs the time, right?
Okay, so let me, I, I just want to get some clarity of what administration is asking for, because I'm completely confused by what you want. So, let's start with clarity of what you guys want, and then let us try and react to that, because my sense is that the council members are trying to react to that and sort of work something out. So, in, in, if, if you're writing the rules, do you want a CIP review once every two years, or once every year? I'm kind of confused, but you seem to be saying both things, so I don't know which it is.
We're proposing a review every two years.
So, you guys would like to see a CIP review every two years, okay, so let us stop and, let us kind of kick that around together, would that be all right?
Can I add to that? I would rather change that to, the CIP would be updated, so the CIP that was approved by council is '23 through '28, the next CIP that we would bring to the council would be '25 through '30, so every two years. So, I do want to pull that back to not a review, but an update to the CIP.
Okay, so let me ask you what I think's a pretty important question. That is not what the city staff has been doing. We have been asked to change the CIP budget multiple times during the most, this current biennium we're in, so that has actually not been the behavior of staff, so are you sure that that's what staff wants?
Well, I would suggest that there were external reasons for bringing that CIP review, including...
The world changed a lot in the last two years, right?
Yes, yes it did.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. I just want you to be sure that you, you feel comfortable committing to that, that that's your ask.
That is the ask.
Okay, okay, so let us kick that around together, fair enough? Okay, you heard the ask.
So, and I, I think part of the confusion also is, I'm not looking at that in... I'm not looking at that interim as a full CIP exercise. It's merely, what extraneous things have come in that affect the CIP that we need to make adjustments to? I would not go, unless there are those extraneous circumstances, go reprioritize the whole thing and do the whole exercise over again. It's not what I'm asking, Drew. Okay, not in the, not in, call it, I don't even call it that. That's why I use the term review, because I meant a weaker verb in that interim versus approve, you know, full exercise as part of the biennial. The interim should just be, how's the plan going, do we need to tweak it? And those will be the things, staff will know what those answers are, council will not. So the interim is not a full exercise.
So let me ask this, could it be that what we're trying to get at is the CIP will be reviewed, as Finance Director said, we'll say as a matter of policy, every two years? I think she'll probably want some wording in here about lead time to that review that involves some community involvement, I think you're trying to get some of those concepts here. So that would be sort of part of what she would talk about as part of the biennial CIP.
I'm going to change the verb on you, though.
Go ahead.
It's not review, it will be generated and updated.
Yeah.
On a biennial basis.
Okay, so.
Full exercise.
So that, so full exercise, once every two years, put in some stuff about, I think you're trying to get some concepts about lead time and public involvement. So if I put that in, get that for us. But then, as a separate matter, we know that our Parks and Public Works Committee will in fact review probably quarterly, generally, how we're doing against the plan. So there'll be sort of seven reviews against the plan during the biennium, maybe six, whatever, but say seven reviews. But that doesn't need to necessarily be in the policy, that's just something that you'll do.
Quarterly reviews should not be in here.
Right, so then, knowing that you'll do that, but that's just review how we're doing and as long as they're going to plan, which they're clearly saying that's how we want to do this, then we wouldn't need to make any changes until the next biennial cycle. So therefore, I mean, there's always something that could happen out of cycle and then we'll deal with that when it happens, because, you know, Canyon Springs happens and we have to deal with it, right?
Unless it's, you know, an emergency, emergency, the time to do that adjustment is part of that interim review.
Right, so then, part of the interim review, so that would be the interim budget review? Because if we had to do something budget-wise, but as far as the CIP goes, we do that biennially and that would be our policy, how does that sound?
I agree with, but I think there's still a interim sanity check, it says the plan's still good.
And you want that in the policy?
I don't want it forgotten.
Okay, but I, so then, so what they're concerned about is what exactly do we mean by that? Because they want to understand how much work we're asking them to do. So how would you describe that thing you want in the?
The delta change review only, so I mean if, for those circumstances where we get like the springs, or we get a KC back in here doing a project which goes south and we need to make adjustments, those would be part of the review and we ought to, I don't think we deny that we ought to incorporate those changes into our financial plan. Yeah, we have Canyon Springs, we have, Department of Ecology comes by and says, oh, you need a third clarification ditch. That's going to change the plan drastically, okay?
But probably not in the next year or two, they wouldn't make a big change like that with that short of a fuse on it.
That takes a time, but there could be other things.
That's more like a death date.
Your drying facility needs to change. Or something along those lines. I'm just pulling things out of hats, but I would at least like that we say, here's the plan, things are still looking good, or here's some tweaks to the plan that ought to be, we ought to reradify the CIP as a result of and incorporate those changes into the interim budget change.
Right, so just to be clear though.
But if they don't affect the interim budget?
Yeah.
No, if they're below that level of tolerance, it's just, here are some things bubbling below the line.
So could it be that what you're asking for is an annual report on the CIP?
I'm worried that the verb "report" will make him twitch.
Well, let's, so I'm trying to find, I saw what already made him twitch, so I'm trying to find some other words and then we can ask them how they respond to that, so. What do you think of "report"? You see, what we're trying to struggle here, it sounds like what we're trying to do is say, we want something to go in front of the council annually, we do not want you to have to redo the CIP, so therefore help us like, we just want to do a check-in?
Delta change only.
Yeah, so can we come up with some wording of something that is that and therefore is enough to find that you all don't think that's a big thing? You view it as a small thing, probably not much different than your quarterly reviews with Parks and Public Works, but, you know, you're coming to the council with it kind of a check-in. So do you think you could come, first off, does the concept work for you? Or do you have concerns about the concept?
Go ahead.
Well, I think Mike Chambliss is hungry for more work, so.
I doubt that.
You know, a report, I would also maybe suggest maybe a presentation, for example, could potentially.
Informal.
Right, annual report and/or presentation.
Something like that?
Yeah.
All right, can we leave you with, it sounds like you're okay with the concept, so work with the words and come back with and say, okay, this is what we think you meant that we think is a good idea, you know, and then let us see what you came up with and we can see if we all had a meeting of the minds or not. Does that sound all right?
That sounds just fine.
Councilmember Christensen, any different view? Councilmember Watten, did you have a comment?
Just one word comes to mind, catastrophic, or maybe catastrophic event, something that is, you can define by a 20% overage that would trigger some sort of staff reaction that the council has to take, rather than.
20% of what?
We're talking about capital improvements and these are long-term investments the city is making. And if there were a catastrophic event that caused it to get out of whack, well, what does that, and it goes back to the delta.
Can you give an example of what such an event might be?
I don't know, spring breaking or something like that, yeah.
Okay, so we have a whole process for emergencies. The declaration of emergency, we have reserve funds that are available for emergencies, so. That's, I was trying to sort of ask it, when you say catastrophic, are you really just tapping into that idea, which we already have a whole separate process to deal with? Does that sound?
I mean, there's got to be a trigger. What would trigger additional staff work and additional council work, knowing that we've got other things on the plate? And that's, those are my comments.
All right.
I think you'll know it when you see it.
Go ahead and draft something up for us that fits this discussion and let's see if we had a meeting of the minds, how's that sound?
I think there's been a lot of communication by council and staff in the past when there has been that kind of obvious event that we would come back, right, and have that conversation and council has actually asked staff to update the CIP at various points as well, so.
My sense is, but I want to be sensitive to what we're trying to do here as a policy, but my sense is, if there's a significant event, that becomes, that's not a secret, it gets dealt with.
Yeah.
I think what Councilmember Holloway, my understanding of what he's getting at is now, okay, but there wasn't a catastrophic thing, but hey, we're a year since we last looked at this, let's have a check-in. Let's just see, has this thing strayed significantly, in which case maybe we need to take some action? Or no, it's on track, okay, fine. I think that's what we're looking for, is that right?
Right, I mean, it kind of reflects off, if, heaven forbid, we had another CA carry event in here, I, we should have a discussion of how that affects the projects in the plan to adjust for that. I'm not sure that actually comes to the level of changing the biennial budget, because I don't think we specifically specify out these projects and no more. We just say, here's the plan and here's your budget, execute what you can. With the CIP plan, saying like to do this this year, that year, that year, but I don't think it's restrictive to say you can't pull forward or push out as long as you stay within your budget. Correctly, we're wrong, please, because I often.
So you're not wrong, so we appropriate at the fund level?
Right.
In essence, however, we have been reporting, when we do bring in Agenda Bill right back for, we do report how we're doing against the project budget overall. So there is a check-in point there to assess whether we're over or under the project budget in total when we do bring a contract back. But that is something that council may want to consider down the road if you want to appropriate at the project level, which has been a discussion point in the past. We would recommend against that, staff.
I mean, if we, like they did last time at the wastewater where they were able to combine a couple of projects and save a significant chunk of change. I don't think it requires a total budget redo to go ahead and say, pick the next item on the list and bring it forward. We're not authorizing at the, but at the project level.
All right, so we're kind of meandering here, let me just close off on the question of the annual CIP review. Do you guys feel like you understood what we wanted you to do?
I believe so.
Okay. So let's just talk about this question of how you want to budget the capital budget, okay? One option you have is to budget at the fund level. So here's what you have to understand. If you're budgeting at the fund level, what that means is you have this big list of projects on the CIP and it adds up to, in the biennium, $30 million. If you budget at the fund level and you appropriate $30 million, they can spend the $30 million on anything they want. They don't have to spend it on the list. If you want them to spend it on the things on the list, then you have to budget at the project level, which says that list is what you authorized. So if they want to move things around between the projects, they have to come ask.
No. I agree that I authorize at the functional, whatever. I wrote it down by camera.
Well, that's really for the operating budget.
All right, I agree that we do it at the fund level, but I believe the CIP is an informal agreement between council and administration that these are the projects and the priority we work them. If there is a change in that, then there should be a discussion. It's not a formal approval or whatever, but there's an agreement there that needs to be discussed.
So do you want to put that in policy or do you want to put that? So if we appropriate at the fund level, there is no legal requirement to do that?
Agreed.
If there's an expectation, do you want that in the policy? Although, understand that an expectation is not binding, it doesn't force them to do it. But do you want to document that or do you want it just to be, as you said, an informal understanding, which, you know, just where do you want that level of?
I'm happy at the informal level until we prove that we can't do that and then I would ratchet up. But I see no reason to ratchet up at this stage.
Okay, I don't agree with you. I'm absolutely for the CIP. Why spend all that time on the CIP if they can just disregard it? I mean, those are the projects we're picking, that's what should happen now.
I don't think.
Wait, wait, there's, hold on, hold on.
I don't think that's what they're doing, though.
Hold on, there's a whole sections called programs. We don't tell them which streets to do, we say, street resurfacing program, you take it from here. But the big projects, we say, that park, Stellar Park, or whatever, we name the parks and we say this much money. And I think I would feel like if I came back two years later and they hadn't done it and they'd spent that money on something else, that would not meet what I expected.
I'm in agreement.
So therefore I would, I would say we should budget at the project level. So meaning those line items that are in the CIP, that's what we're approving, not the total at the bottom of the page.
I don't want to, I, I, I think doing your expectation at level will hamstring. And I don't want to do that. So maybe you pulled me to the middle. If we want a statement in here that says, and we'll review, ongoing review of how the projects are going according to the CIP plan in conjunction, you know, whatever the appropriate words are. I haven't, if you want to state that in here as policy, fine, I got no argument, I just, again, I haven't seen that we're not doing that to the extent that I want to ratchet up, but I hear what you're saying, I'm willing to go the middle of the say, let's state the expectation that we are reviewing the CIP on an ongoing basis and that as changes come in, which they do and the discussions do happen, that those discussions, let's codify, at least policy-wise, that those discussions are correct.
All right. Any additional different thoughts or point of view on those? So we've sure got a couple of different ways that we've just sort of kicked around. One is budget at the fund level, one is budget at the project level, one is budget at the fund level but have some policy statement about expectations around communications. Any particular, you don't like those three, you like one or shores, anything to add?
Yeah, my preference would be the middle ground. I do have concerns about hamstringing the city going forward and just adding so many checks that we're not able to get anything done, especially as we're looking forward with a six-year capital budget that's got a number of large ticket items. I do understand the concern and I know that it can be hard to pull things back, but I do think that to be something, we add some language in here. I think that, you know, I haven't seen any red flags to date, I'm not aware of any, so I'm not particularly concerned about that. But I'm fine with including the language, but sticking with approving at the fund level.
Okay. Councilmember Benson?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I always think it's really exciting when they come to us and tell us some way that they've managed to combine projects or save money or seen an opportunity to do something that needs to be done that they can do a lot cheaper because they got something going on. So it sounded like you were saying what I was thinking, we're budgeting at the fund level, but maybe there's some way to require them to just let us know when these opportunities arrive and if they're going to do anything that's going to depart from the CIP, know that the council's going to want to hear about that and have some way to speak into it.
So with that in mind, City Finance Director, Mr. Butte, could you, could you put in something that says, we're going to budget at the fund level? Let's say that. For, the capital funds will be budgeted at the fund level, that that we expect that any deviations from the appropriated budget, capital budget, or from the CIP would be reviewed with council prior to doing it? Some kind of words like that? And let's see, kind of maybe try and put together what I think is kind of a consensus here on how we can do this? Okay?
Yeah, okay.
Look, any concerns about what we've just asked for?
No.
Okay, all right, we'll see what you guys work up for us on wording. All right, let's go, let's see, so let's just go back to and march through it. So 6.0 objective, any comments on 6.0?
Oh my gosh, didn't we kill that horse?
I don't know, did we?
We were on 6.1.
Yeah, but I don't, we were bouncing around. We got to 6.1 because you were asked to, so let's just go through it. 6.0, any comments on 6.0?
I guess I got one and maybe it's a tweak. In prior sections, we had definitions. Seeing as we're talking capital and we've had discussions of what is the definition of capital, might be good to put it in here so that next time there's any questions of, this is what capital means.
Are you referring to capital projects, programs? Those definitions, it is included in that section brought down?
I think what you're referring to, there's been a lot, as you know in your experience, there is always this question of what is capital and what is operating? And to a great degree, accountants can say, well, here's the definition. And accountants all know that even with that, there's still some areas of judgment. So at least could we put in the definitions? You know, so things with a year, a life greater than a year or some major, you know, they're standard definitions for what is capital.
There's some sections, there's some policy statements already.
Where is that, can you point us to that?
Yeah, let me, let me find that, so we're going to bounce around.
To deal.
And so, in 6.3.2, project costs, there is reference to capital outlay. So this is where it's proposed to distinguish capital outlay from capital projects and programs. It refers to capital outlay, our expenditures for small minor projects and that those are included in the operating budget.
Okay, but you defined it by saying what it's not.
Say that again?
You defined it by saying what it's not. It's not capital if it's between $5,000 and $50,000 and has an estimated life of five years or less.
That's capital outlay. It's, it's still, it's still a capital, but it's in the operating budget.
If it's $5,000 or $50,000 for the estimated lifespan of five years or less, is it in the capital improvement plan?
It is not. It's in the operating budget. That's what's proposed here. Capital outlay type expenditures are proposed to be included in the operating budget.
I'm getting reuse of the term capital in different.
Yeah.
So capital projects and programs over $50,000 are what's proposed to be in the CIP or capital budget. Anything below that threshold would be in the operating budget referred to as capital outlay.
So to put it another way, what, what this is saying is, you got something that you think might be capital. Well, can we start by, so adding to this, not changing this, but adding to it, just, so for someone like me, I can look at the duck walking and I can say, that's a duck. I know it's a duck, I recognize a duck, right? I don't think most people know whether that's a duck or an eagle, right? So I see an expenditure, how do I know if it's a duck or an eagle? And I think we start by saying, does it have a life of greater than a year? Isn't that typically where that definition starts?
Well, what's proposed here is that it's the, you know.
No, 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 I'm not asking about your capital outlay. I'm fine with that. I'm just saying, the basic concept of what are we even talking about here? So if I pay city administrator's salary, is that a capital outlay? Right? So like, it's something we take for granted, but we shouldn't, because nobody knows, what are we even talking about here? So can we start by saying, look, things that have a life greater than a year are capital in nature. Things that are capital in nature could be one of three categories: capital outlay, capital project, or capital program. Capital outlay goes in the operating budget, capital programs and capital projects go in the capital budget. So if we kind of lay it out, then that, I think what, this is what kind of kicks up all the time is, how do I even know if I'm talking about a duck? Is, help me know what the definition is so I should, like, everything's an eagle, that everything that isn't more than a year's life, got it, that's operating. Oh, it has more than a year. Now we got to ask ourselves, which are the three categories? Could we just lay that out for them?
Certainly.
Make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that the question you were asking? Yeah, I thought so. Fish doesn't know what water is, has no concept of water. Like, accountants have no concept of capital, but everyone else is trying to figure out what it is. Okay. So then, hearing that, if we have something here that says, okay, here's things that might be covered, here's things that might be capital in nature, what this is saying is, if it's between 5 and 50 and has a life less than five years, that we're going to do in the operating budget. Everything else will either be a project or a program. How's that sound? Or that's what that says? How's that strike you?
Well, in the second paragraph too. Has the reflection.
In the CIP. Yeah, it's just saying the same thing.
It's, yeah, that one actually is defining what our capital project.
Well, you still don't know if city administrator's salary is a capital item. So she'll solve that by adding some intro language.
I hope it is. Hope he has a useful life of more than five years.
No, no, but his monthly.
I'm tired of rotating staff.
His monthly salary only has a life of one month.
Okay.
Well, or maybe we should renegotiate that. Okay.
Pay him for five years. I'm just on payment for five years.
All right, so assuming we get that sort of clarified a bit, did those, so maybe what we could do, since that came up, that question came up right away when we were at 6.0, would you consider moving this way up towards the front? Because I think for folks that aren't sort of used to accounting and these kind of terms, helping them define it right up front will help them then understand the rest of what they're looking at.
Sure, we will move that up there.
So since we're looking at 632, we bounced there, look at 6321, which I, do we even have 6321 as a policy right now? Because this is fantastic, in my view, that we're adding this. I'm just curious, is that like a new add or do we already have that?
So please.
I think it's a new add.
Six point.
6321?
Yes, if that, oh, 6321, wow.
Making sure that we think about impact on the operating budget, the long-term impact on the operating budget. I don't think we previously explicitly required that, which is fantastic, it should be. I mean, it's practical matter, I think we've asked the question, but this just formalizes it. So that's great. I think that's new. I'm trying to say, well done, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, it is, it is new.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Good job. Okay. So then, any other comments on 632 while we're here? It's going to get moved, but any other comments on what's in it?
Well, yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, it'd be nice if that second paragraph started out with, CIP capital is, capital project capital convergence is there, where the other, and the first paragraph says, you know, operational budget capital outlays are, and then give the definition. So now I've got a term I can hang, I need a, I'm sorry, I'm very binary, so I need a term I can hang my head off of. And I need a CIP capital and a operations capital outline, to get my words right.
So instead of three, he wants two. So there's capital outlay and there's something else. Give me a name, and then within that name is projects and programs.
Got it.
That's what you're saying, right?
Right, because we're using project and programs in both definitions. So it's not a distinguishing factor.
Well, we'll clarify that. Move the section up, provide a better definition of terms, and then it sounds like the thresholds, the ranges are, are fine with the committee?
I'm concerned you.
I am.
No.
I'm not educated enough in the field to have an opinion on that matter. I trust you. He might have a second opinion, but.
I do, but I, it's not necessary for me to, I mean, this is fine. It's within a range of reasonable choices to make, in my view. Councilor Watt?
Actually, two things. I like the capital outlay, and then if you could put like IE, computers, laptop computers, chairs, whatever, that might help give some clarity and people can think that aren't accounting type.
You want a $5,000 chair?
Well, actually, his comment, his comment illustrates the point, which is, notice the only named small dollar item, so that's apparent to him. He gets that right away. But of course, you're thinking about things like breathing apparatus for the fire department, you know, other things like that. So maybe giving a couple of examples will help people realize the breadth of what we're trying to say here.
Sure.
Exactly. But, but my other question is this, you had the word may and you replaced it with should, and I'm going to ask, the, the third option would be will, and so anyway, that's, that's my only question. May, should, or is it will?
So let's discuss that. I was, no, no, hold on, there's, I didn't raise that, although I had a lot going on in here about that. So let me just share my thinking on that, and then we can see, you know, Finance Director, you can share your thinking, but there may be times where something, let's just imagine an item that costs $40,000, and there may be an item that we think we simply must do, and we simply cannot find it in the operating budget. By using the word should, we allow ourselves an out to say, you know what, we're actually going to shove this one, this one time into the capital budget, because we got to balance the books and we think we must do this. So it gives us a little bit of wiggle room, which I think future councils will reasonably once in a while run into, and I think we should not force that. I think we should give them room in the policy to do that. Should is pretty strong, it says, don't do this, but it still allows for it to happen. Finance Director, do you have a different view?
You know, in, in previous committee work, that was, that was why in this work in progress version, we went through that effort, that discussion to change the word may to should, and also the word will. But I would ask the city attorney to provide any guidance on the use of will, shall, should, or may.
So the city attorney shall give us information on use of the word shall. City Attorney, also, if you could just comment on my comments that should would allow some wiggle room, is that an accurate understanding?
Correct. And that's usually the purpose of using should, is to describe a, a general or desired standard that, that may not apply in every circumstance, that there's some discretion to depart from the standard is, that's what the, typically is the intention indicated by that, as opposed to shall, which is mandatory. In the case of, of will, I suppose, in the, if you're talking about in 6.3.2.1, the will be reviewed, I'm not sure, is that reviewed by the council? Should be reviewed by the director and the city administrator or the mayor? So there's some ambiguity there depending on, and perhaps intentional, that it could be either or both. But if council wanted more specificity, there, you know, there's an opportunity for clarification there.
All right, so hold on, let's, before we take the second portion of what City Attorney said, let's, is there any further discussion about the word should that's in the first Or the worst, use of the word will in 6.3.2.1? We'll take up the other, but just the use of those particular words in those particular locations. Any concern or further discussion on that? Questions? Because if not, then we'll just leave it as proposed.
Well, I guess I agree with the should. I was going to stay out of the coulda, woulda conversation, because I didn't do well last time, but I'm worried that you softened the first paragraph, but the second paragraph is pretty, is, gives you no wiggle room. You opened the door from one building, but the door to the second building that you want to get to is locked.
I think he's focusing on the word, the first sentence in the second paragraph, and the use of the word are.
Are. There's no wiggle room in that, in that sentence.
So City, sorry, Finance Director, will you take a look at that and ask yourselves whether you mean to recommend to us the use, the word are, or whether you mean to recommend to us the use of the word should?
Should be.
Or should be, I guess would be, yeah.
Okay, so I want to verify, because, well, we were at 6.3.2.1, which is impact on operating budget.
Yeah, we backed up.
Okay, all right, you backed up and, or you didn't blinker when you changed lanes, though.
Exactly.
Okay. So.
Don't tell Chief Phipps, because we don't want a ticket.
Let's see, so please direct me to the word are here.
Okay. 6.3.2, second paragraph.
Yes.
First sentence.
Yes.
You will find the word are. And we're questioning, would you have a think as to whether you mean to recommend that that maybe is should be, should be, as opposed to are? Because are is mandatory, should be has some wiggle room.
We can, we can change that to should be. All capital projects or capital equipment purchase of at least $50,000 and are having a useful life of five years or more should be included in the CIP. Yes.
Then you've got wiggle room both sides.
Councilor Christensen, any different or additional thought on that?
I was just looking back through the last sentence then in the first paragraph of 632. Do we need to do any tweaks to language in that as well?
Will be included.
We have will and shall.
Should, yeah, you better look at whether that shouldn't be should, as opposed to will. We're trying to give you a little bit of wiggle room, we're, not you, we're trying to give a little bit of wiggle room as opposed to mandatory.
Yes.
But we like should, we want to say, this is how it ought to go, but we just want to leave a little, little crack in the door.
What I can do in, in the proposed policy is go through that find and replace, which is a helpful tool. I went through may and then replaced it with should.
Yeah, but hold on, we're just talking about 6.3. We're not talking about anywhere else in the document. 6.3.2 is all we're talking about.
We'll stay right there.
Okay.
You're just fine.
Okay. All right, any other thoughts on 6.3.2? Okay, I think we bounced here from somewhere else. We were way back at 6.0.
Wait a minute, we had a conversation, 6.3.2.
Oh, yes, we didn't double back, did we? So all projects submitted for inclusion in the CIP should be reviewed. What?
By administration. I, I don't want to get into.
Hold on, should we be telling, like, I think we need to stay in our lane. I don't think it's for us to tell administration what they should do. We can say what they need to give to us, but I don't think it's for us to tell them how to do their business, right?
Bob's point is, you said, will be reviewed, and his question is, by who?
Well, he's saying, do you want to say by who, or were you intentionally not saying by whom?
Let's just put Cheryl and Brooks in there. We ought to, in some form, say by who.
What would you like to see it say?
Administration. City staff.
But don't you think the city council should also consider that? I, I can tell you, I always consider it. In fact, it's a pretty significant item. Anytime I look at a capital expenditure, I want to know, how's that going to impact the operating budget? Because we have more capital funds than we have operating funds. We have a tighter problem on operating funds, so I'm always worried about doing something the operating fund can't support. I'm happy leaving it as it is with it.
I'm leaving it as.
Councilor Christensen, do you have any different thought?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, let's double back to 6.0. So you're going to move 6.3.2 up for us and changes we talked about. So with that in mind, that'll come either somehow in 6.0 or immediately following it. Any other discussion on 6.0? Okay, so now I'm reading it work, now, now I'm doing my detail review. So the third bullet ends with a singular capital asset. Is that meant to be plural?
All right, it'll be plural. This is meant to be plural.
Okay, any, no other comments on 6.0? All right, 6.1, I think we dealt with 6.0. Any further comments on 6.1? All right.
Other than I now have two capital budgets.
Now you have capital budget and you have capital improvement plan, which is not the same thing.
Peace, but I have, I have CIP capital budget and I have capital outlays in the operating budget. So I have two capital budgets.
And so what would you like to see done?
I don't know, just say, it makes a statement incorrect.
Which statement?
The capital budget will be formally known as the CIP.
Oh, that's actually a wrong sentence, period. The CIP and the capital budget are two separate things, not the same thing. The CIP and the capital budget are two separate things, not the same thing.
The CIP, the first two years are incorporated into-
Not automatically, that's two separate actions.
Well, absolutely, it's two separate actions, but the CIP informs the capital budget.
So maybe change the sentence to say that, because I think that's what you mean to say. But I do like, you've got it somewhere else as well, maybe move it here as well. But I think you're trying to also communicate, hey, generally, the first two years of the CIP will be what is submitted as the biennial capital budget. So maybe, I think you've got that wording, but let's just sort of, so maybe revisit that first sentence to say what you just said, which is, I think, what you're intending to say, and then also just immediately follow with that, how that articulates to the budget. Does that kind of hit on what you were raising, Councilmember Holloway?
I'm not sure, I'm going to let it go.
No, tell us what you want.
No, I agree with your statement that the CIP informs the budget.
Right.
And there's a feedback twice for something. But I'm still stuck at that I have two places where the capital, where capital appears in the budget. Capital outlay and capital CIP projects. So that first sentence is still wrong, because only one of those goes into the CIP.
The capital budget, you're talking about the first sentence in 6.1, right? The capital budget describes the capital investment. Okay, so I think what Councilmember Holloway is saying is, when you redo that first sentence, in addition to the concepts we just discussed, could you include some clarification on the notion that, okay, there's capital outlays, which are not part of the capital budget, or the CIP? And then there's the other name, insert name here, that has the, you know, is the other two. It includes those things.
Yes, I've got it to change to include the definitions for all of that.
Super.
So that was my understanding of how we would change this in order to-
Okay.
Better describe.
All right, we will see what you wordsmith for us. All right, any other comments or questions on 6.1? Councilmember Holloway?
Well, I'm not sure what the master plan is.
Utility master plans. There's also park master plans.
Okay.
What do you mean by incorporate, though? They won't incorporate them.
Well, often, a master plan, those capital investments are what informs the CIP.
Yeah, informs, not incorporates, though. So I think you want a different verb there.
We'll change the word.
Yeah. The concept's fine, it's just I think you have the wrong word. I think. Go on.
Technically, you should define out what the master plans are. But that's not my real issue. My real issue is the sentence is restrictive to say you will only ever change it as part of a biennial review. There needs to be a clause in there that says, or as required by extraneous circumstances, or something.
So can you point to the wording that you're focusing on?
Master plan changes will be incorporated into the CIP during the next biennial capital budget cycle. There needs to be a conditional clause that says, or even, or as directed by council based on whatever. You could technically get a whole new council up here, decides to go a different direction in the mid-biennial, and technically, you can't stop them. And to the CIP during that next, and I think I've seen it happen in at least one city.
Why not say, master plan changes will be incorporated into the CIP, period? Just stop there.
Or say-
Without saying when, just they'll get incorporated. I think that's the main concept of the sentence, isn't it? You're not so worried about when, are you?
No, master plans are updated, not necessarily parallel to a CIP development, you know, budget development or appropriation. So they would be, they would be incorporated. If a master plan is updated, then that would be part of any-
Right, although actually, they would never be incorporated. So that's the wrong word, it's same as before, like incorporation has an illegal meaning. It means you're including it.
We'll take out the word incorporate in the policy.
Yeah. Okay.
Planned into the CIP.
Yeah, sort of work with the wording to be the concept, but I think what Councilmember Holloway's saying is, so either don't say when, or if you do say when, then you have to have a when that includes as needed, not restrictively only the next time we go around. So whichever way you want to go on that, to recommend to us.
All right.
Fair enough?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on 6.1? Okay, 6.2, criteria and ranking. Any comments or questions? My comment would be, I'm absolutely, completely opposed to this section. This is not how we set things. I absolutely will not follow this in my votes, and I don't think we should attempt to tell any council member how they should decide their votes. I think that is exactly what they were elected to determine on their own. And I certainly don't want to be in a position where someone puts a label as acceptable or not acceptable, or it's desire, like, sorry, that's what the council decides, not what some policy decides, is my point of view. We've never told council how to decide how to vote. I don't think we should do that now. And I absolutely don't think this is how we do it.
Well, there are projects on the CIP we will not, we, the city has no jurisdiction nor will ever do. We will never do the 202 bridge.
So I don't want to have an argument with a fellow council member about, was this desirable or acceptable? Like, I don't want to have that. What I want to say is, I'm for that project. Oh, you're not for that project? Okay, well, we discuss, and then we vote, and then that's the decision of the council. So I would, I think 6.2 should come out in its entirety. Mr. Bute, did you have a comment for us?
Well, I just wanted to say that the administration in the past has used a scoring system, in essence, to internally at least, rank the projects for funding. And so part of previous CIPs that we proposed, we've incorporated that as our best objective sense that we've provided to the mayor. The mayor had the opportunity to either say yes to the projects or no. In essence, and a lot of what took place back then and what you're seeing today is through that work that we did previously as well. And so to a certain extent, I don't think this is intended necessarily to restrict council, right, in what they want to do with the CIP, but it does provide guidance overall to the staff regarding how they should approach the CIP.
So with that in mind, I'd be, what do you guys think about, what if we struck the first sentence, leave the other sentences in place, which are really about the process Mr. Bute was just talking about, and then strike the table?
Sorry, the first sentence, the table, and what was the other?
Strike the first sentence, leave the other sentences that are proposed in place, but strike the table.
Oh, okay.
And then do they simply want to use the table internally, it just wouldn't appear here?
Yeah, we wouldn't tell them to use that table. They, this leaves them, it says they shall rank it, and they'll use their professional judgment on how to do that.
Yeah, you guys should continue to do that. I do view this as part of an agreement between administration of council, how we're going to do things. Don't, council's not restricted to that. You guys should continue to do that, they expect you to do that. Heaven help us if you don't do that. But I'm not going to dictate to you how you arrive at that. That's council getting into your process deeper than these two.
Now, city administrator may dictate that to you, but that's between you and him. We don't need to be in that, in that.
He almost smiled when I was talking, I saw that, so. I think he was in agreement with it.
Okay, so any different view than asking for those changes, then?
No, I understand those changes, I agree.
All right. Finance Director, did that, did you follow the requested change?
I heard you.
Got it. All right. Any other comments on 6.2? All right, 6.3, any questions or comments on 6.3? I just have a small wording change I think doesn't change the meaning, but in 6.3.1, the first paragraph ends, the last two lines after the comma, the following are capital financing strategies used, dot, dot, dot. I think we want to say, the following are some of the capital financing strategies, sort of along the lines of how the lawyers say, include but are not limited to. But without saying all those words, so just are some of the, is that objectional, or are you worried that has a different impact than?
No.
Okay. Any concern with that suggestion?
No.
Okay. Committee members, any concerns with that, or different thoughts?
No, wherever we can get money.
Yeah.
I don't want to restrict you.
Get it where you can, okay. All right, any other comments on 6.3, comments or questions? All right, 6.4. Only suggestion I have here is, the last sentence of 6.4, CIP development should include. I think that shall should, should be a should, shall should be a should. Leaving some wiggle room if, for some reason, they weren't able to do it. Councilmember Christensen?
I actually don't know if I agree, just because the language in that sentence is pretty weak. It says that it shall include public engagement efforts. I'm not sure that the committee is ample time, I don't know if it's that. I mean, I understand putting in a wiggle room, but I feel like there isn't so, the sentence isn't so forcefully written that we're going to be-
Agree.
In a situation where we want to say we don't necessarily need to go to the public.
Got it, all right, withdrawn, good point. Any other? Councilmember Benson?
I was just going to say the same thing.
Ah.
It seems to me that shall is totally appropriate if all it's asking for is an effort to be made. And I think you do need to try to engage with the public.
Yep, sounds good, all right. So I think we're at the end of Section 6. So let's take a five-minute recess, and we'll start up with 7.0 in five minutes. If there's no objection, we're going to recess. Seen no objection, we'll recess for five minutes. We'll call the FNA committee back to order, and we are now up to Section 7.0, debt management. And Finance Director, do you want to give us an overview?
The debt management section is generally just updated narrative. In current policies, there is debt management policy statements. The goal was to remove some duplicate language and procedural content. But nonetheless, I think our practice here has been going section by section, so, but that's a general overview.
All right. In light of that, I'll just ask, rather than go section by section, committee members, is there any questions or comments about anything in Section 7.0?
There is no, you mean the whole section?
It's not that long.
Well, yes. 7.1, first bullet.
Okay, 7.1, first bullet.
In the past, that kind of bullet has been, has by some council members interpreted as no debt.
Oh, right.
And in case, particularly in utilities, debt is an important practice because you always have the concern of, when I'm putting in new facilities, I should have, or new capability, I should have those who will use it in the future pay for it. And my mechanism to do that is debt. So it's not-
I'd be in favor of taking that bullet out, is that what you're suggesting?
Take it out, or it needs, yeah, okay, take it out.
Councilmember Christensen, any different view?
I'd take it out or modify it, I'm okay with taking it out.
All right, let's take it out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then, Section 7.2, the utility system replacement due to age, whatever. There's nothing in there that says we can use existing utility monies. We have GFCs that we are collecting. If we have a fund balance of GFCs for a new thing we're doing, we first ought to take that GFC and apply it to this new item versus go out for debt.
Are you sure that you're ready to make, that's a big policy statement you just made.
Well, just somewhere in here, we should have, this leaves me no room to actually use existing reserves.
And where do you see that limitation?
It says either reserving portions of the enterprise fund-
Which section?
It's here.
7.2?
7.2, second set of bullets.
Got it.
There needs to be something, you know, existing reserve balances are somewhere in the mix here that we could use also.
The first bullet point says reserving portions of the enterprise fund balance for capital improvement projects. Is that-
No, he's saying, I think what he's trying to say is using portions.
Using, okay, using portions.
Is that what you're trying to say?
Right, utility fund replacement, we're not reserved, this is expending. Utility system replacement due to age, need to upgrade, and minimum meet standards should be financed by, not reserving, but using portions of the enterprise fund balance for-
Yeah, so-
This is where I get-
So the use of the word reserve here isn't, it doesn't mean reserves?
I understand.
And so I think, let's get that word out of there, because that's not what we actually mean.
Yes.
Help me because I slipped a cog every down there. Enterprise is utilities, or is that operate? Okay. Deal, I'm good with it at that stage. All right, and then, so if you'll take that, then 7.4?
Sorry, Councilmember Christensen, any different thought on that?
No, that's fine.
Great, go ahead.
Okay, so I'll read it, and tell me if it, does the read allow? As a rule, existing debt obligations will be- As a rule, existing debt obligations will be refunded through issuance of refunding bonds unless the refunding plan will achieve a net present value savings of at least two percent.
Why are we making a limitation like that?
Well, why is it at least, or at a minimum?
But why would we pre, why would we imagine that we'll predefined what a future council might find sensible?
It's a suggested target, and you do not have to have an actual target number in policy if you choose to strike that.
My thought is, they might choose to refund it with no savings, but a longer repayment period, there's any number of things they might think of, so why? I would sort of suggest.
It's just a common target that, that, that other communities have used, but again, you do not have to have a, a value in there. And it can be removed.
My thought would be take seven point four out. Let them decide at the time, they'll know how to do the, the, we're not helping them make the decision by saying this. They'll know how to figure it out.
Or do you take it just will achieve a net present value savings?
No, no, they might do it without any, it might be a totally valid thing to do.
Refinance just to extend the term.
Yeah. Or to remove some onerous requirement in the existing debt agreement, there's any number of reasons they might do it without getting a present value savings. In fact, the most common reason for refunding existing debt in the corporate world is because there's some debt covenant you're trying to get rid of. And if the bank's agreeable, then go do it.
Go do it.
Oftentimes, when you hear a presentation from your bond financial advisors, they'll present the savings, and that it, it is a one percent savings or two percent, and so that's why sometimes policy refers to a, a target for that to occur, so it, it gives our financial advisors, you know, something to, you know, to provide you a, a report or presentation that meets your, your policy of thresholds.
Well, it starts with as a rule, which is kind of a softening.
Well, as a rule, then they will, I, I just don't think seven point four is helping a future council, I don't think this policy is doing, but I think they'll be able to figure it out, this doesn't help them figure it out, I think they'll know at the time.
Right, you're saying there may be other reasons for refinancing other than the savings.
Yeah, and I don't think we can presuppose to list out for them, like, let them figure it out, they'll figure it out. I don't, I don't think we're adding any value by trying to tell them now what, what they should do. In this regard.
But you should give them the, you may take everything, existing obligations can be refunded through the issuance of refunding bonds, period.
Well, we could say that, but but they, they don't need us to say that in order to be able to do it, they're already allowed to do it.
Okay, if you want to take it out, all right.
I've seen some necessary. Councilmember Watten.
Thank you. Ms. Ferguson, is the purpose of this to provide guidance to the bond organization? If they're going to present it, if, if there's less than two percent, don't even think of presenting it as an option, is that the intent?
Well, it is, policy is guidance in order for the administration to bring forward issues. Nonetheless, if there is an opportunity for refunding bonds for some purpose, typically it's savings, then that comes before the council.
So is it almost a trigger clause, so that people that are using the financial policy can address it with the council?
It is, financial, the bond financial advisors will, will ask if there is a threshold that's, that's set. But, but again, they'll provide that in their presentation to show the council what this is, this refunding proposal is saving the council.
So we could say that refunding proposals should include enumeration of the benefits to the city. But I think it's sort of, I don't think we need to say it, it would happen regardless, but if we want to say that, then fine, but I, I don't think we should imagine that we know what, to list out what those benefits must be. And I just don't, they can figure it out for themselves at the time. I mean, if, if we want to say, if it's, and, and if the net present value savings is it, it's less than two percent, they should say why, like, it, it, I don't, I don't see what value we're adding with this, with such a policy statement, they're gonna say why we should do it at the time, and the council will evaluate that at the time. I don't think they're gonna look back and say, oh, ten years ago, they said we should, like, I just don't see that being helpful. Unless we were saying, if we, unless we're saying, don't do it unless, but then, in that case, I'm opposed to it, because there might be other reasons in which case we should do it.
Are we back on seven point four?
We are. So you guys, so what I'm hearing is you guys are happy with seven point four, as is, and you don't want to see a change, I'm not.
No, I thought we agreed, take it out.
No, that's, I didn't see agreement, sorry. Oh, we did, okay, I just didn't catch that we were in agreement, I was like, waiting, like, I don't think they're agreeing with me.
No, I went on, I agree with, went on to the next section.
Okay, sorry, 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 thank you, thank you. So what's really but I, but I want, but I want to talk about this more evidently. Now, here's what's really cool, is we go from seven point four to seven point three. Well, so that landed with a third, okay, the seven point three bond rating.
I think you got rid of that, another seven point four, so didn't you go from?
Well, I got another seven point four, the numbering is.
We'll modify the numbering, we, I, I, I see that.
We'll just refer to them as seven point three A and seven point three B, and we'll know what you're referring to.
How about bond ratings?
Change those.
All right, actually, we weren't marching to individual items, so yeah, any other items that, questions or comments in section seven, is I think what we were doing? So let me just ask, the bond rating section as it's written there, because my observation is we don't routinely take actions specifically designed to improve the bond rating. I often think we maybe should, or should more explicitly consider, you know, include those considerations, but we haven't. Is this?
Have in the past, but go on.
No, no, from time to time, we do, but not, this says continually.
Oh.
You know what I mean, so I, I just, all I'm trying to ask is, are we trying to say here, is this just sort of a, is this meant to change behavior, or is this just meant to acknowledge behavior we already think that we're following?
It's meant to acknowledge behavior that we are following.
Okay, fine. Okay. If there's nothing else on section seven, we'll go into section eight. All right, section eight, investments, Finance Director, do you want to take us to an overview?
Yes, investments, this is a financial, an actual financial policy that the council had adopted, this was a separate one, it was adopted with resolution five five nine. So in, in this, in this policy, it's very similar, there's various updated narrative. In a previous conversation, F and A committee discussed removing one of the objectives with regards to safety, safety, as this is inherent in state law. There's again, updated narrative, we removed a list from existing investment policy, which is found in state or RCW. And then in the diversification eight point one zero, there are some new targets for diversification of the portfolio that are suggested. So that we essentially break up, if you will, who we use for brokers, we, we spread out.
Sorry, which section were you just referring to, I missed?
Eight point one zero, diversification.
Eight point one zero, got it.
Eight point zero, okay.
This section also sets a maximum maturity of ten years for debt, and the.
This is for purchase debt, not issued debt, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And so then finally, from a reporting standpoint, the proposal is to memorialize that the reporting goes to the council and or committees versus the city administrator, which is in current investment policy. We would propose that in the quarterly financial performance reports, that there would be a section on the investment portfolio that comes to the council. That's all that I had for an overview for this section.
Sorry, could you just go over that bit about the approval, again, just towards the end of your comments, I didn't see where that was?
Section eight point one one, reporting, it's the last section in the investment portion. The, the proposed policy describes reporting to the council and council committees versus current policy states that reporting goes to the city administrator.
Got it, thank you. All right, committee members, any questions or comments? I, I think maybe do this as a whole section again, unless you want to go through item by item. Can I ask, Finance Director, so in section eight point ten, you mentioned there's I, I think you called out that it, there's a limit here, no more than twenty percent should extend beyond five years, is that new, or, I think you called that item out, is that correct?
I did call that out, so it's memorializing that no more of twenty percent of the total portfolio should be in investment vehicles extending beyond five years.
So can I ask, so would that be a new policy, or is that already existing?
It's, that's my understanding that that's new, is to, is to set that guideline in place.
And what, do you know, what, so what is the reasoning behind, behind why we would want to put such a limit in?
Well, oftentimes councils want to restrict going out too long for maturities. So that's, that's a, a common restriction, put on the, the length of the.
Right, but do you know why they would make such restrictions?
I've just been, I mean, that's just been councils that, that I've worked with in the past, why they want to do that, it typically falls under what I'll, I'll define as, they want control over, and they just don't want to, it's, it's a little bit risky to councils to go out that far.
So let me ask, because when I look at the list of permissible investments, these all appear to be liquid investments that are readily tradable, so there's, so I could have a twenty-year instrument, I can sell it tomorrow, like, like, there doesn't seem to, seem to be a liquidity issue with these particular investment instruments, so I, if, if it's not a liquidity matter, I'm not seeing why there would need to be a restriction. Like, if, if we legitimately thought we were gonna have a seven-year, a balance around for seven years, we could get a better interest rate, why not? If it's one of these vehicles, because if things go south on us, we can sell it, like, these are all readily marketable investments, right?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, if you want to take out that restriction, I'm happy to take out the restriction.
You're trying to say, hey, lots of times, there's a restriction, do you guys want that, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's common to be in there, it doesn't need to be in there, we're going to be very prudent with the investment portfolio, and so if no restriction is in there, we're, we're still going to go after the best, best performing portfolio according to state.
Am I correct in believing that almost always, the state of Washington's security pool will be the best return we can get of the permissible investments?
Not always.
Not always, okay.
Not always, we're seeing better terms from Fannie Mae's.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, non-callable, we have, we have really improved our investment portfolio over the last several months, obviously, riding the waves, and so we are, we are now probably averaging about two point eight percent. We've got, we've got locked in for three-year periods of time, we're starting to see offers going out a little bit longer, and so nonetheless, you know, we're actively managing the portfolio, building a ladder.
And you're, yeah, yeah, ladder, yep, but you're beating the, the Washington, so
Yeah.
It used to be there, you could never beat the Washington State pool, but that's not the case anymore.
No, that's not the case right now.
Got it, okay. So my thought is, we don't need that twenty percent limitation, I'd be in favor of taking it out to give them more flexibility, potentially get a better return, I, I, I don't see any risk to doing that, given the limited, the very limited instruments they have to invest in. I wonder if it'd be all right, I'd like to ask Councilmember Watten if he has anything to add on that.
You're in eight, Ken.
The only thing is, is the FDIC coverage, just because if somebody reads it and says, hey, Councilmember Watten didn't read it, it's, it's two hundred and fifty thousand FDIC now.
All right, so we'll double back to that, but in terms of the concept of the twenty percent.
I'm good on the other stuff.
You know, limitation of the five years, do you have any different view or additional view to that notion? Okay, sorry, where were you just directing us to on the CIP?
Eight point eight, under eight point eight, and I'm sorry if I'm skipping ahead.
Eight point eight, where is it listed? Oh, I see, under the CDs, the FDIC coverage limit is old, yeah.
Yeah, we'll change that, yeah.
You might want to do it so that it is sort of evergreen by not naming the amount and simply referring to the FDIC coverage level?
And that's perfectly fine, it's not in the RCWs either.
And it's, like, that information is readily available to anyone, it's, so just making that reference allows anyone to quickly find out what that would, number would be. All right, so then is, on that twenty percent, any different, you, committee members, you okay with asking for that to come out? Any different view on that?
That's fine, based on the answers.
All right, so Finance Director, let's take that twenty percent limit out.
All right, thank you.
And then Councilmember Hallway.
So eight point four.
Eight point four.
Delegation of authority. Is council delegating to Finance Director, or is council delegating to administration?
Here it says we're delegating to the Finance Director. Actually, we're, we're delegating to the Finance Director or anyone she picks.
Right, so I have, I for any large purpose, I have two people sign off on it, for any large investment, I want two people signing off on it. So I need some clause in here that says, you know, with coordination with the city administrator, or whatever. You know, thirty years from now, while we're all doing mint juleps on the beach, I may have somebody in here who wants to invest in Bitcoins. They should have the city administrator going, although that is not a legal investment item, I saw your head. But I do, there does need to be check and balance of at least two people signing off on major investments.
So could you, could you guys take a think about who the check and balance should be, and then propose back to us a modification to eight point four that requires the agreement of two director or above-level people?
I'll take it, you're in concurrence, and I'm not just paying per budget.
Absolutely, always, always sign up.
But, but you said that as an either or, both could be true.
Probably are.
Okay, other comments or questions in section eight?
I'm good with it. I'm good with it.
Councilmember Christiansen, you ready?
Yeah.
Section nine, long-term financial planning.
Mr. Chair.
Just a, City Attorney, yes.
Thank you, clarifying question on Councilmember Holloway's request for sort of the dual signature. I heard some references to for large transactions, the current delegation of authority in 8.4 is for all transactions, so is the committee looking for the twin signature for all transactions or above a certain threshold, or would you just like us to propose something?
It's probably a threshold, because if you're going to go get a $5,000 CD, I, you know, and I don't need to know everything you do between checking and savings, probably a bad example, okay? But there's a certain limit at which there's a level of risk that I don't think you should bear on your own, one, that there should be two signatures on there that says, yes, I'm going to go, I'm going to take 20% of my budget and go put it in a five-year CD with this institution, whatever. If that investment were to go south, this, you're the donkey that gets the tail pinned on as a result of that, where it really should be somebody with you.
That's a really good point, it protects Finance Director as well as protecting the city.
Yeah.
So I think what I just heard is a dual, to City Attorney's question, a dual, a tiered approach in which something below that would be just the Finance Director, but above that would require two. Let us know what you think that threshold should be and who those people should be. Councilmember Christiansen, is that...
Absolutely.
Yep, did I get that right, Holloway?
It's a good point.
Councilmember Holloway? City Attorney, is that, answer your question? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to 9.0, or section nine. Finance Director, do you want to give us an overview of section nine?
Certainly. Section nine, we talked briefly about last night, and we changed actually some of the proposed language to remove 20-year and just calling it a long term. We also added in language that includes the six years for utility enterprise funds. And that, that was it in this section. This is, I guess I have nothing more to add other than our conversation last night.
Okay, super. Any comments or questions? All right, let's move on to section 10. Auditing, accounting, and internal control. Finance Director, do you want to give us an overview?
In this section, this, there were, in current policy, there was policy statements with regards to each of these sections with regards to internal controls. So in the proposed policy, there is updated narrative, removed duplicate language and procedural content in here, in this policy. In section 10.4, this, there is a new policy that sets a target for capital asset threshold versus there is nothing in the current policy. The new proposed policy proposes that the ER and R is updated every two years, similar to the biennial budget timeframe. And then also refers back to projects in the CIP, capital projects, capital programs, that recommends an increase of that $50,000 threshold. That's all that I have for an overview in this section. Happy to take any questions.
All right, let me, so just under section, first section there, the second sentence, we don't do that, so we probably should take that sentence out. We don't follow GAAP. Because GAAP requires accrual basis accounting, we follow cash basis accounting as permitted, but we don't do what that second sentence says. Any different point of view on that?
I don't have a different point of view.
And then 10.3, what you were just talking about, so because we don't capitalize anything, because we're cash basis, like, we don't depreciate, like, we don't do this accounting that's mentioned in 10.3, so I'm trying to...
We could take this out until we move, if we determine that we move to GAAP basis.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely. The second 10.3, correct?
Yes, yeah, the second 10.3 called capital asset threshold.
Yeah.
Great policy, but I just think not, we don't do that, so, yeah. All right, let's go back. 10.0, any comments or questions on the intro 10.0? All right, moving on, 10.1, any comments or questions on 10.1? So I have a question for you, Finance Director, so generally, the auditing standards and the accounting standards that we just took the reference out to, I'm not sure what the bars requires, but generally, accounting standards and auditing standards require that the governing body, meaning the city council, have some involvement of oversight of internal controls. We've not been doing that as a practice. 10.1 acknowledges the city council has a role, but we have actually not been doing any particular thing with regard to that role. Should we build some level of, you know, generally, it doesn't need to be a significant amount, but some level of oversight by the city council? And one of the things that would do is also, it would demonstrate the city council meeting its requirement that's outlined in the first sentence here, but it also would have the council take on some responsibility along with the mayor and administration staff in this regard. So should we have some level of, as a policy, should we have some level of council involvement and oversight of the internal controls?
Certainly, if you'd like to recommend a policy statement and a guideline for council, that's, that...
All right, so I can give a recommendation, it'd be pretty, I mean, what's typical, but perhaps could you also just maybe look at what other cities that have such a policy say? I think it's a pretty, I don't think this is extensive, and I think it's pretty standard, so I think we can find it pretty easily. But let me know if you need some help, but I think you'll be able to find something pretty easily that you'll think is appropriate to us. All right, but let me know if you want some help and I can, I can help. Shoot me an email or something. All right, any other or additional or different thought on 10.1?
I do have a comment on 10.3B.
10.2, Finance Director, you're satisfied that the $5,000, first off, is the $5,000 limit the current limit or is that a change?
That is, it's my understanding that that is, there's not a limit, so trying to define where there's guidance for the Finance Director to write off, otherwise they come to the city council.
So do you think that, so what I'm thinking is often, a policy like this will say, will specify an individual amount and an aggregate annual amount above which, so, because you wouldn't want, I think the council might be concerned if we had 100 $5,000 write-offs and would have said, wait, we would have liked to hear about that first. So perhaps put a aggregate annual limit as well that would then trigger council review? I doubt you'll ever hit it, but maybe just in the interest of good policy.
Yes. Do you have an amount that you'd like to see?
No, I think, I think whatever you would like to recommend to us, I think we'd be receptive to. Committee members, any different thought?
We're good with that.
Okay. Any other items on 10.2? All right, moving on to 10.3. Okay, moving on to, so we took out the second 10.3, is that correct?
That's correct.
Finance Director, yep, okay, 10.4.
So the capital asset threshold, that's gone?
That's gone, because we don't capitalize, it's just not an accounting thing that we do, because we're cash basis accounting, or modified cash basis accounting.
Okay, good, I wasn't happy with that section, all right.
And with regard to 10.4, we're not defining small and attractive items because state law already has a definition and therefore that, we would know that that's the definition, is that correct?
That was my understanding.
Yep, I believe that's correct. Well, either state law or the state auditor's office, it's well-defined what that is, yeah. All right, so can I just ask Finance Director, and I don't know if, maybe this is a thing for City Attorney, but 10.5 and 10.5.1 appear to me to be somewhat in conflict, but does that just not to be, we don't need to worry because 10.5.1 would govern? So for example, with vehicles, I can imagine a vehicle that has a market value of $3,000, but I believe that 10.5.1 would say, no, titled vehicles by state law have to go in front of the council. So does it already serve to override that, or do we need to be more clear in the language?
10.5.1 refers to utility assets.
Oh, I see, utility assets.
One of the differences is a public hearing that's required.
Ah. But am I correct that there are no vehicles, for example, owned by the utility because they're owned by the city and then they are allocated cost, but they don't own the assets, is that correct, the vehicle assets, is that correct?
Utility still owns the asset.
Oh, they do?
Yes.
So we have, of all our vehicles, we have here's vehicles owned by the utility, and here's vehicles owned by the rest, by the rest of the city. We actually have them, we know which ones are which.
I'm going to have to ask...
I don't know the answer to that question, but, and I'm trying to pull it up, my recollection is the statute refers to the purpose for which the property was originally acquired. In other words, was it acquired, was the vehicle acquired for utility purposes as opposed to what's the entity in which the property is titled?
Got it. So your thought would be, look, we can go to the RCW chapter reference there, and we would know which things it applied to, and so therefore that, so the first part, 10.5, says vehicles with a value greater than 5,000, but we would know that 10.5.1 would override that if it applied. Is that correct? We don't need to sort of put more language in here, it would just automatically work that way?
That's right. If it was intended for utility purpose, then...
Then 10.5.1 would override both.
Then we would have to follow the process.
Okay.
That's outlined in the statute, which includes a public hearing.
Okay, so this wording is, doesn't create, we're fine with this wording legally? Any other comments or questions on 10.5?
No.
Okay, huh, that brings us to the end of section 10. Moving on to section 11, risk management. This is one of the longer sections that we have.
12 is the longest, yeah.
All right, any comments you want to make to us regarding 11.0, Finance Director?
No, this is, this is a new, new section, just to set guidelines, set policy statements about reviewing from a risk management standpoint, that, in making sure that we are insured.
So this section seems to permit a decision to self-insure a risk. Should such a decision, should there be a policy here, or what are your thoughts on the notion that there should be a policy that if we do indeed choose to self-insure a risk, or perhaps a risk above a certain amount, that the city council should make that decision or approve that decision before it's, before it happens? What are your thoughts on that?
I'm going to ask Bob to weigh in here if he's got any thoughts on setting a threshold.
Sure, sure.
Sorry, could you ask?
Yeah, so in section 11, risk management, we're talking about insuring risks, and it implies that self-insuring some risk is permissible. And my question is, for self-insurance, a decision to self-insure a risk, say above a certain dollar amount, what are your thoughts on whether the, as a policy matter, that we should require the council to approve such a decision?
You certainly can. I think that the current program that the city utilizes through WCIA is technically a self-insured program, depending on how you define that, so I guess it's a question of whether the council wants to take on that, that process and procedure, either annually when we renew and pay the premiums, and what's the right dollar amount to do that. Currently, I don't think that, that the city's insurance decisions, you know, are tiered based on cost or risk value, they're differentiated by the type of insurance that's offered by WCIA versus the type of insurance where the pool doesn't provide it, they have to purchase it on the secondary market. For example, the property insurance is a cyber, it's a vanishing cyber risk insurance policy that is shrinking and, you know, is probably not going to be available in a few, but things like, and the fraud insurance that are, that are purchased for, that the city purchases through WCIA, but they're offered by private insurers. So I'm not sure how it would work if you set a dollar threshold, because it seems like then everything would just come to council.
Got it, got it, thank you, that's very helpful. I have no further questions or comments on 11.0. Committee members, any comments or questions?
The explanation was helpful.
Yeah, that, thank you, City Attorney, it's very helpful. All right, section 12.0, any comments or, oh, sorry, we should probably ask for an introduction, no, kidding, I'm kidding.
I'm going to, I'm going to spell out the section. No, this is, this is essentially a placeholder for performance management, very brief statements by the council over the past several months about performance management and measurements, just wanted to show that the administration heard you and we put a placeholder in. If you'd like to take this out until such time, we would...
That's fine.
Okay. I wanted to draw on with this section.
It is my belief that we have come to the end of the document. That being the case, I don't believe there's any further business for the committee tonight. There are no objections, we'll adjourn.
Chair?
Finance Director?
May I ask just to have a short discussion about next steps?
Oh, fantastic, yeah. So let me just ask in that regard, our next meeting of the FNA committee is a week from today, maybe, I think?
Yes. Yes.
Wait a minute, no, it'd be a week from tomorrow, yeah, because of the holiday, yeah.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
So would your thinking be that all of the modifications that we've asked for might be ready by that time, or is that too soon?
That is too soon.
Okay.
Staff would like some time to reconsider some wordsmithing, and then, and then bring back a final track changes document. My practice is also to give you a clean copy, so that you can refer to what has, was changed, but nonetheless, there's a clean copy, and then FNA then would, would essentially do a final review of that, and then we would move that to the full City Council for discussions.
Got it, and so with that, do you think then, not one week from now, but three weeks from now, do you think that might be the timing, or what sort of timing do you have in mind?
It would, it would be my recommendation to shift to that second FNA Committee meeting, so yes, three weeks, and then from there, should the FNA Committee support moving that to the next council agenda, we would, we would do that.
Okay, yeah, you know, we've, we have repeatedly brought up to Council that, you know, please tune into what we're doing here, and as you've noticed, they are tuning in. So I think they're fairly close to what we've done, and so I think hopefully, you know, I guess what I'll do is, yeah, after our meeting in three weeks, I'll invite all the committee, sorry, all the council members, in advance of the following council meeting, to have a look, send any questions your way, the kind of, but really ask them to kind of tune into that again, with the goal of trying to get it to Council at that council meeting where we'd bring it to them. Does that sound like a good plan?
Yes, that.
Committee members, how's that sound? How's that sound to you? Yeah, okay, how does, does that answer your question, or what you were looking for? Great. All right, any other thoughts or concerns, Finance Director?
No, thank you for all the, all the, all the work, this is a heavy lift, and glad that we've been able to go through policy, and appreciate that, and so look forward to next steps.
All right, it's been a heck of a lot of work by you, Mr. Boute, your staff. You know, we so often forget to say thank you, but definitely the people on this committee understand how much work this has been, and we so appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, all right, if there's no objection, we'll adjourn. Hearing no objection, we're adjourned, thank you, everyone.